Hearing and seeing none, we'll call for the vote same way, same order. Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Somebody's, that's Tony's phone, I know it's Tony's phone. Charge, right? Okay, so the minutes claims and payroll have been approved. Thank you. At this time, it's the public comment period. Is there anyone in person to make public comment?
Yes, we have two gentlemen.
Okay. If they'll come onto the camera and just say their name and address, would someone like, that's their present physically like to keep time for the three minute period?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mark McInnes. And I'm here to add just a little bit to some of my comments last meeting. I own three acres of property that's located on Dean Street in Charlestown. It's owned in the county. I'm in the county. And another piece of the property that joins me, which is owned by Charlestown Landing Partners, is also in the county. There are, if anyone has zoned their property into the city, my objection is that my property is owned for construction work. I have a variance store out there and heavy equipment six days a week on the property. So I'm, I'm not a fit for, I'm lo, I'm located in between two pieces of the property from a Charleston apartment. I'm not a very good fit for what, for any kind of apartments that they want to build on that property. So I kind of object to the property being zoned into the city because it, it was, when I got it zoned for construction purposes, the adjoining property was in the county and it's still, so I just wanted to add that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexander Addy Jr. I own the property near Charlestown. I'm owned in the county, not in the city. And I'd like to keep it that way. I like to have, not have problems, I've had some problems with people in an apartment there now, but they're not right next to me, the swimming pool is next to me, but not apartment buildings. And I'd like to keep it that way rather than have a apartment right next to my property. Bad trip in the past, people trash bins and then everything else at the police out every several times. I'm not in good health, I'd like to sell out, get away from it all, but till the economy gets better, I don't think that's going to be a good deal, but. Anyhow, just like to say that, just like to continue with anything.
Is that all of the ones that were there in person?
That is all the people for public comment.
Due to the coronavirus state of emergency, we also have opened up public comment for people to send in electronically via email. The policy was announced and we do have a few emails. Please note that as although I am reading these emails, I am simply reading the messages. Only emails that pertain to the agenda items per the resolution on decorum were included. And of course, they still hold to the three minute time period. So if someone could keep time with that, if at any point I go over that in one of the comments, please gesture so that I know, okay? And I'll just read these as they're written. The first is from Elijah Harris at 6514 Sunset Loop, Charlestown. He says, "Why should we have to cover the costs for the failures of Bob Hall? He made his bed and now he should have to deal with his own costs for legal proceedings. The city should not be liable for his wrongdoing. At the end of the day, I will remember how the council voted for this." Thank you, Elijah Harris. The second comment is from Ellen Keith at 101 Clark Road, Charlestown. She says, "I urge the city council to vote no on Resolution 2020 R5. Bob Hall needs to take responsibility and pay for his actions. I ask you to fire Michael Gillon Water as your attorney. His unethical advice has led to all of these lawsuits. The city council never needed an attorney until Michael Gillon Water and Bob Hall put the former council in jeopardy of lawsuits. The people of Charlestown elected you to make decisions to better Charlestown, not Michael Gillon Water. His unethical practices and bad advice need to end so our city can heal." Ellen Keith. The next is from Sally Doss at 133 Winthrop, Charlestown. She says, "Why should the taxpayers have to pay for Bob Hall's illegal doings? The majority of the citizens voted him out for the wrong things he did. I don't believe those same citizens want to pay for his legal fees. It's time for him and his cohorts to take responsibility for his actions. I am asking the council to vote your conscience. Do not be a yes man to Bob Hall. Do the right thing, vote no on Resolution 2020 R5." Sally Doss. The next is from Melissa Crawford at 344 Clark Road, Charlestown. Ms. Crawford says, "Honorable Council and honorable mayor, I am sending this email to inform the council and mayor of my opinion and concerns as a resident and taxpayer in Charlestown regarding the aforementioned resolution." And she has in the subject matter, my apologies, 2020 R5. was filed in January of 2020, at which time Mickey Weber was the city attorney. I have personally known Mr. Weber for years and he is more than capable to represent the city and Mr. Hall in fulfilling his obligation and duty as city attorney. I have no doubt in his ability to do so. After researching Indiana Codes 341335 and 341341, I believe them to be interpreted that attorney's fees can be paid for former employees, but not necessarily authorizing that they must be paid. Why would you find it necessary to pay two separate attorneys when city attorney Mickey Weber is already representing the city of Charlestown? In my opinion, that is not only a waste of my tax dollars, but an extra expense for the city of Charlestown, which is unnecessary. Thank you for your time, Melissa Crawford." Next is David Keith from 101 Clark Road, Charlestown. He says, "My comments are for the city council. First, vote no on Resolution 2020 R5. Second, the people of Charlestown voted five different people to the council to use their common knowledge and common sense to help move Charlestown forward. Hiring any attorney by the council is a waste of taxpayer money. Also, we are getting Gillon Water's opinion instead of the five council members. Why does the council need an attorney when the city attorney can answer your legal questions? Save money, fire Gillon Water today." David Keith. The last one is from Barbara Meredith at 1801st Street. She says, "When I read the resolution, I noted that there is state statutes listed giving the council the right to pay for legal service for an ex-employee, which Hall is, I presume. With that being stated, the council is within its rights to do this. I would say the only viable argument would be if the city could afford the cost without causing hardship to the taxpayer. I hope the council has checked to make sure that cost is acceptable to the budget. I also assume that it is a foregone conclusion that they will all vote yes for this resolution. So my concern is, can we settle this lawsuit and therefore save money on legal fees and avoid a big settlement and more bad publicity for the town to be divided about? Basically, what I want to say is the council has the right to do this. They intend to do this, so everyone needs to get over it. Get the case settled as quickly as possible for the least amount of cost and further division to the town. Then when it comes time to vote again, vote to get your councilperson out if they are not doing what you as a citizen want them to do. Otherwise, get over it." Barbara Meredith. That's the end of the public comment period unless there's someone else in the audience. Moving forward down the agenda, we have the mayor's comments and I do have an update to provide for the council. And I will send this out in text form at the conclusion of the meeting so that it's documented publicly and then the clerk treasurer can keep record of it. First, I wanted to talk about the, the status of where we are with reopening. On Friday, last Friday, May 1st, Governor Holcomb extended the state of emergency for COVID-19 until June 4th. And he outlined a plan for us to reopen businesses and social events over the next two months until the beginning of July. The governor's order allows municipal leaders to adopt reopening plans that fit their local needs and their best situations. Charlestown businesses have been encouraged to follow the governor's plan. I have released though, a three-phase reopening plan for our own city facilities, including parks, city hall, police headquarters, and any of our rental facilities such as the A and E Center and Family Activity Center. My plan does not include specific dates like many of the others you've seen. That's because in, in talking to Eric Azel at the Health Department, he advised and I thought it best to take his advice locally, that since local rates of infection actually went up as a percentage last week, it would be, it would be bad, a bad decision to move forward. So I set the criteria in that release plan to focus on the measures and data that will show us when it's safe to move forward. Right now, we'll remain in phase zero until we've had at least 14 days of that criteria being met. So we're currently closed to in-person business since our staff are working remotely and alternating shifts in person here in City Hall. The pandemic is causing a significant economic hardship for our businesses and for our families. And it's expected that it's going to affect the city revenue as well. So I wanted to also give an update on what we're projecting and where we think we're going to go and the steps that I've been taking as executive to try to help mitigate that. I received an unofficial review of our monthly cash flow from our financial advisors at Baker Tilly. And they assume that we're going to have a 30% collection rate for June property tax, only 30%. They also calculated an overall delinquency of about 10%. It's estimated, and it's only an estimate, but it's estimated that we will have a budget shortfall of approximately $1.5 million this year in our June disbursement due to the reduction in tax revenue caused by the pandemic. It's imperative at this time that we make financial decisions that bear the potential shortfall in mind. This comes at an extremely difficult time for many of our departments because they've reached critical need for equipment and resources. In order to save money where possible, I've reminded all of our supervisors to monitor their spending carefully, the focus on their needs, not necessarily their wants. As an example of where we are, when we, when we came in, I was very cautious about the budget to begin with, and thankfully so. The supervisors are taking this seriously and we have some hardworking folks. Out of the clerk's office, Heather was able to do an assessment of our uniform use and make a change in that vendor that saved us $11,500 a year. We've also cut non-essential take-home vehicles. There are four less city vehicles on the road using fuel and, and resources. Those fuels are, those vehicles are only for fleet. Also, in comparing third, first quarter salaries, we have cut the salaries by $46,390 by only filling essential staff and being extremely conservative in how we run that. So we are, from the beginning, making sure that we have saved money. This also means that some of the quality of life initiatives that we originally were excited about need to be temporarily paused. So things like parks renovation or sidewalk construction will be hold and hold. Unfortunately, it means we've also had to cancel our annual Founder's Day Festival, which is particularly heartbreaking considering it would have been our 20th year celebration. But the governor's reopening, our inability to create distance there and financial concerns made it a necessity. Still evaluating the Family Activity Center financially to see what happens there. And I'll have a better announcement for that after a little bit more data has been received. I want to clarify that the financial impact of COVID-19 also delayed the city's adoption of the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. That fund is critical revenue for many municipalities and has an extremely low impact on the homeowners. But like you, I also agree that the circumstances called for us to delay that tax and not adopt it at the time. I want to clarify though, that the CCD fund is not a new concept for our city. The prior administration adopted this fund with Resolution 2016 R8 in July of 2016. Ultimately, the DLGF rejected the adoption of this fund in that year because the city's legal counsel at the time failed to publish the notice twice in advance as required by state statute. This year, in anticipation that I would sponsor that CCD legislation at the April council meeting, I took extreme care to make sure that those publications got put in as necessary, which is why I went through Baker Tilly, our financial advisors, to make sure that everything was done because they are certainly the experts in that area. Unfortunately, the publication created some confusion due to the difference in standard practices between what Baker Tilly does and their public notices and what are, what is common practice with our clerk treasurer. Baker Tilly includes the names of representatives of the governing body that vote on the matter at hand. So that way, the taxpayers know who to contact to express their opinions, which is the function of a public notice. This does not mean that those names published support the legislation or that they will vote in favor of it, simply that they are the ones who cast the vote. This confusion happened because our clerk treasurer typically does not publish those names. Instead, it usually has the name of the person who published the ad, most likely the city attorney. This confusion prompted your, the council to pass Resolution 2020 R8 at the last meeting in April. Unfortunately, I am issuing an executive veto of that resolution due to a procedural defect that makes it invalid. Council rules of decorum established earlier this year in Resolution 2020 R1 dictate that all legislation in the form of ordinances and resolutions must be submitted to the clerk treasurer's office no later than Thursday afternoon of a Monday meeting. The clerk did not receive a copy of Resolution 2020 R8 three weeks after the meeting occurred. And that calls the resolution to be passed under the wrong number. It should not have been number eight, it should have been number four. Therefore, it's a, it's an invalid resolution. I understand that the text of the resolution has been added to the regular monthly meeting now and with the correct number. But for all the reasons I've stated about the matter of confusion and that this is not standard practice, I don't believe that resolution is necessary. The last thing I want to do in my update is remind you that the Resolution 2020 R1 that we adopted for decorum earlier this year limits sponsorship of ordinances and resolutions to the mayor, council members, and the clerk treasurer. In order to help keep us on track in our meetings, especially ones held remotely like this, the elected official who is sponsoring the legislation should read or if it's too long, provide a clear summary of the proposal. And we should then get a motion from a council member to put it up for consideration, followed by a second of that motion, at which time we can have discussion for as long as you need. And then following discussion, the presiding officer, me or if I'm absent, the council president, will call the vote and then announce the results. Voting for now, with us being online, should be done for roll call by accuracy. Thank you. I have, I will provide a copy of the, of that mayor update for you, so you have it in text. Next on the agenda, we have ordinances and resolutions for consideration. First up is 2020 OR8, Additional Appropriation Ordinance. The ordinance says, "Whereas it has been determined it is now necessary to appropriate money that was not appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Charlestown, Clark County, Indiana, that for the expense of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same." So we have from the fund, general fund for police miscellaneous fund, $7,855.82. And then from the Lloyd Public Safety for Police Vehicle Payment, $4,017.60 for a total of $11,873.42. Can I get a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make that motion.
Is that Ruthie?
Yes.
Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
And BJ, say your name because sometimes I can't catch on the video who's doing it.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion about this appropriation ordinance? Causing it to long just in case, if anybody wants to say anything. Okay, hearing no discussion. I'll do the roll call in the same order that I do so you can know when you're coming in on here. So say yes or no on the vote for this. Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously on its first reading. Since it was approved unanimously on its first reading, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rule or in anticipation that we will vote on this on the second. Do I have a motion to suspend those rules?
I'll make that motion, Ruthie.
Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second? I see BJ raising his hand, are you trying to say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Seconded by BJ, Steele? Any additional discussion on this before? We're voting to suspend the rules in anticipation of, of second reading. I'll call through again on that the same way. Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. So calling for the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 OR8, the additional appropriation ordinance as it was read. Do I have a motion to approve it on its second and final reading?
I'll make that motion, Ruthie.
Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by BJ, Steele?
Yeah.
Any additional discussion? Seeing no hands waving and heads shaking, I'll call for the vote once again. We're all getting used to this. Jackson?
Yes.
Sorry, I went out of order, Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson's a yes. Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yes.
The motion clears at second and final reading and is therefore approved unanimously. The next item on our agenda is ordinance 2020 OR9. Is there a council person who is sponsoring this, who would like to talk about it? Or would you like to go ahead and make a motion and put it up?
Let's go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. Motion made by Brian Hester, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, it's open for discussion.
Do you have any questions? This, this ordinance is set up so that we can establish food vendors.
Brian, if you could get Attorney Gillon Water to mute his microphone, that might help.
There we go, sound better?
Yes, that's great.
Okay. So this, this motion is set up for mobile vendors, food vendors, ice cream vendors, to be able to come in Charlestown and give the city more food options. There are some stipulations. I know that there's an ordinance, it was back in the seventies, I believe, that disallowed any mobile food vendors, but we would like to try and bring it back. There are some stipulations that we would like to have because we want it to be as safe as possible. They need to have a permit through the city. And in our resolution, I think the permit states that it was going to be $200 per, for permit. I would like to make the change and see if we can change that to $100 for the permit. One other key point that is in this resolution is that the workers that work there, we would like for them to have background checks. Main reason, you know, not every employer in town does background checks, but we're not inviting those employers to go to parks and neighborhoods to set up and run a business there. Because we're inviting these vendors to go to parks and neighborhoods, we want it to be as safe as possible. So we want to make sure that we have a background check and we don't have any issues later on down the road. I have talked to the chief about the city doing background checks. He verified that they are okay doing that at a $25 fee. That's quite less than neighboring Jeffersonville. I know that sometimes you can't compare Charlestown and Jeffersonville because it's a lot, larger city. But Jeffersonville annual permit is $300, we're asking for a hundred. Jeffersonville's criminal background check is $100 per check, we're asking for 25. And I think that is, that's a really good deal, it's a great start. Give us some options, allow other vendors to come into town and maybe give the people of Charlestown some different options to eat. Anybody have any questions?
Is it $25 per company or per employee for the background checks?
Per employee.
Okay.
Officer Wolf? You're okay with doing the city, doing the police department, doing the background checks?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're good with that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So this limits people, they have to register what days they're going to go out in the neighborhood.
If they're going to be on a public property, they need to notify the city. If they're going to be on private property, then they do.
And if they're going to be on public property, who will be in charge of that?
The Parks Department.
Parks Department. And our Parks Department is prepared to, to handle this. Tony, I'm sorry.
Did I change that? The Parks Department has not set it up. And so we'd rather go through the code enforcement department.
After I had the draft out, the discussion draft, Mr. Weber and I spoke and there was a request that we change that to the code enforcement official. It, it, that would be fine, that, that's not the, you know, the graphic disorder from scratch. I didn't know who would be in charge of parks, it seemed logical, but what Tony says makes sense as well.
We're setting that up, making it up, my documents and they did do the background checks. As a matter of fact, we're going to get the documents today.
In the city of Jeff, I stuck with them. And they give them a badge so that if anybody walks up and says, "Do you have the permit? Are you able to do this?" Is that something we'll be doing?
Code enforcement officers have badges anyway by state law.
No, the vendors.
Oh, vendors, yeah, we'll give them a permit.
They'll get a permit.
What about the background check for the employees? Will those be on file somewhere?
Uh, they'll be on file in the code enforcement office, the only department office that I think could be on file, the police department. T? Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, they, yeah, they asked if the background check would be on file. Yeah, they asked if the background check would be on file, it would be on file in my department. Would it be on file?
We, I believe when Sherry runs them, there's a, there is a record that's kept of those, I'm pretty sure. I'd have to double check, but.
And you'll be in charge of, if they're going to be on?
Right, correct, correct.
You're going to be in charge of knowing what days then.
If they're going to be on, be on the park, turn it off here through the park, 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 or something, get it right, and add it to the record.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
All right, any other questions? I think we're good, Mayor.
Okay, all right, then we will call for the vote again, doing the roll call votes, so say yes or no, Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yeah.
If there's interest, since this is a unanimous vote on this ordinance, if there's interest in suspending, in voting to suspend the rules and do it on a second, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Brian Hester, was there a second?
I'll second that.
By Ruthie Jackson, so have a vote, I see nobody raising their hand for discussion, so we'll have a vote on the suspension of the rules, so Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we'll call for the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 OR 1, an ordinance authorizing remote food sales with the noted change as councilman Hester introduced it on the fees to, what was that Brian, $100 for the, instead of 200, was that the only change?
Yes, $100.
Okay, so that's what you're voting on, is that changed in that ordinance, so we'll go through again, Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yeah.
So the ordinance 2020 OR 9 on food trucks is approved unanimously on its first and second reading. Next up on the agenda, we have ordinance number 2020 OR 10, an ordinance updating the vehicle tow-in fees established by 2000 OR 11 for the Charlestown Police Department. This ordinance establishes a change in tow-in fees, it does two things. The 2,000 ordinance, when it was created, established a tow-in fee of $25 per occurrence and directed the proceeds to a non-reverting department training fund. This ordinance changes that fee to $50 and transfers it to a non-reverting department fund, which is administered by the chief of the department and it can be used for training, equipment, or any other expense deemed reasonably necessary by the chief for the performance of the functions of the department. I'll entertain a motion for this ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Brian Hester, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by BJ Steele, is there any discussion or any questions about this ordinance?
We are, in this ordinance, we're doubling the fee, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any thought of maybe doing an incremental over the next couple of years?
I'm happy to let Chief Wolf speak on this, but he did reach out, he researched other departments and this increase is in alignment, it's been 20 years since this was increased and so we might have had some incremental along the way, but other departments are in line with this, charging anywhere between 35 and 50. And so Chief, did you have something that you wanted to add to that, I'll cede the floor to you if you do?
Yeah, I've kind of checked around the local agencies, Sheriff's Department, Jeffersonville, Clarksville, and Sellersburg. Sheriff's Department is currently at 25, Jeffersonville's at 35, but from what I've heard, they are looking to raise theirs as well, I don't know what to, I heard from what I've gathered, at least $45. Clarksville, they just raised theirs to $45, they did that about two years ago. And in Sellersburg, they are at $40, but Chief Whalen advised me they're looking to revisit theirs again and possibly raise it, I don't know what to, he didn't say, but $45, $50, something like that, so. You know, the $50 fee, although it would be the highest in the county, so right now, it, it kind of falls in line with what I've gathered from other departments. They're looking to increase, you know, most of them are looking to increase their fees and be about the same area, so. You know, if we want to do it incrementally, you know, that's fine with me, or if, that way we don't have to revisit later, or we can just leave it at 50 now, so. And, and these are just for law enforcement toes only. It's, it's, if officers take any kind of action or arrest or the vehicle needs to be towed for some kind of law enforcement action, this does not include a personal tow or toes that would, you know, result of an accident unless police action is necessary.
Are there other, are there other questions or discussion about ordinance 2020 OR 10?
You know, I'm not trying to dispute that that's $50 is way over, I'm not at all, but at this economic time that we're having right now, I was wondering if maybe, you know, taking it to $40 for the first year and then to 50 may be a better fit for us right now during these times, just a thought.
Okay, if we increase it again next year, we would have to have another ordinance, so I mean, to increase it, it does require that ordinance. These are kind of user fee kind of things, these are folks who are abandoning vehicles or who are more or less in trouble. I think it's important to note that these only accrue when the need to tow a vehicle arises from an operator's violation of law. So this does not take place when circumstances are outside the vehicle owner's control, such as a wreck or accident or something like that. So for that reason and with what the other departments are doing, I'm comfortable keeping it at 50, but Chief, I would, you know, it's your, it's your fund, it's your area.
Like I said, I, you know, this, it's been 20 years since this, this ordinance has been updated, so, you know. I, I understand the tough economic times right now, so, you know, 40 with 45, I think with 45 would be, would be okay. Because that's right in line with what other surrounding agencies are, are doing, so if we can, if we want to amend that to 45, I think that would be okay.
Any disagreement on amending it to 45? Any additional discussion or questions? All right, I will call for the vote on 2020 OR 10 as amended with the fee changing from $50 to 45. Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yeah.
Considering that this has been approved unanimously, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation that we will approve, call for the second reading of this ordinance tonight.
I'll make the motion.
Brian Hester makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, any additional discussion about the suspension? Hearing none, you're voting to suspend the rules in anticipation of a second reading on ordinance 2020 OR 10, Bertram?
Yes.
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Having received unanimous approval of the motion, of the suspension, and I'll call for the second and final reading of ordinance number 2020 OR 10 as amended with a $45 fee. This ordinance updates the vehicle tow-in fees established previously by 2020 OR 11 for the Charlestown Police Department. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance? Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by BJ Steele, any additional discussion, raise your hand or wave. Hearing and seeing none, we'll call for the final vote, this is the second and final reading of OR 2020 OR 10, updated vehicle towing fees. Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson? Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yes.
So the motion passes unanimously on both its first and second reading. Next on the agenda is resolution, where did my agenda go? Sorry, guys. There is, Resolution 2020 OR 4 regarding publication of public notices for the city of Charlestown. I'll cede the floor to the sponsor of this for it to make a motion or explain.
Not exactly sure what you want to explain.
Or, I mean, it just, what the, what the typically, so, I mean, you can just make the motion or whatever.
Yeah, I thought it already passed, but it was just an incorrect number.
Right, and because of the procedural inaccuracy, I vetoed that version of it, so now you're just basically looking at this as if it's fresh, so it's just through the same process to approve it under the correct number. Ordinance essentially, sent difference resolution.
I would like to see if we could take a vote to override the veto.
Okay, but you would be overriding a veto on an ordinance that is procedurally invalid as opposed to just passing, I mean, a resolution as opposed to passing the next resolution that is properly done. But yes, I'll entertain a motion to override the veto of the inaccurately passed 2020 OR 8.
And for the council's information, I don't believe that it was, the failure to put the number on it properly doesn't make it invalid, that's, that's a clerical thing. If you want to override, this is a resolution, not an ordinance, and you guys set the procedures. So if you want to override this, you can, it takes a two-thirds majority, which means at least four of you have to vote to, to pass it again. You can amend the number, I don't think the clerk, who's supposed to assign numbers, not the councils.
So it's been suggested by the council president that he, that we should entertain a motion to override the veto of 2020 OR 8. Do I hear a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by JT Cox, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, so you're currently voting on overriding a veto for Resolution 2020 OR 8, which was titled Regarding Publication of Public Notices in the City of Charlestown. I'll call for the vote again using the, the roll call system, Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yes.
So that, that veto was overridden by a major, by a universal unanimous vote? Mr. Hester, as the sponsor of this, how would you like to go about correcting the number issue since this was not given to the clerks the first time as appropriate?
Doesn't the clerk assign the numbers?
Yes, but they have to assign them, you approved this resolution under the wrong number.
Okay, so. Donna, what would the right number be? You have to unmute it, Donna.
Yes, resolution number four.
Okay, so we would like to pass this as resolution number four. Yeah, we just want to clarify that that resolution number is number four now.
So are you making a motion to change Resolution R 2020 OR 8 to Resolution 2020 OR 4?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has been made to change the number of Resolution 2020 OR 8 to Resolution 2020 OR 4, do I have a second?
JT, yes.
So motion made by Brian Hester, seconded by JT Cox. Any additional discussion on this issue? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, Bertram?
Yes.
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 And Cox?
Yeah.
So unanimously approved to change the 2020 OR 8 that was approved at last meeting, vetoed then overridden in this meeting to the number 2020 OR 4. Next on the agenda is 2020 OR 5, and I'll cede the floor to the sponsor of this to make the motion or to read it. If you're not speaking, please remember to mute your microphone, so there's not a whole lot of feedback. Is there a motion on the table to consider Resolution 2020 OR 5, a resolution authorizing representation of former mayor of Charlestown in lawsuit and waiving potential conflict of interest for common counsel attorney?
I make the motion, Brian Hester.
Motion made by Brian Hester, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, is there discussion on this resolution? Okay, hearing none?
Yeah, this, I do have a discussion, can, can we talk about this for just a second? I'm gonna have Mr. Gillon want to explain it in just a minute, but just my little thoughts about this. Tony Jackson, Bob Hall, the other members on this should not even been in this, named in this lawsuit, but because they were, I do feel that Mr. Hall was working as a mayor at the time that this allegedly occurred, I feel that he should get representation. Any one of the council members or Mrs. Mayor, if, when, if and when you ever are not in office and somebody sues you over something you did in office, I would hope that whoever's in council at that time would represent you also. Anybody who gets in public office would be crazy to get in public office if they didn't have any representation, or if they wasn't covered by some representation, so. And this is not doing a person that I know a favor, this is doing something that, somebody who worked for the city and you're trying to cover them, because they did work for the city and they were trying to do what, what they thought was right for the city. If you agree if it was right or wrong, that's a different opinion, but because they worked for the city, I do believe that they should get representation.
I will take the floor here on behalf of having received counsel from the city attorney on this matter and tell you what has been done already and where we are. I do think however, it's important in our discussion that we recognize the financial impact of what you're about to approve, if you do so or prove it. The city attorney, Mickey Weber, believes that former mayor Bob Hall is immune from this lawsuit under Indiana Code 341335, Section A. And he believes that the city council is also immune from this lawsuit for a slightly different reason. He has recommended a brief motion be filed to remove both the city council, Bob Hall, in fact, Tony Jackson, from this lawsuit, and I have authorized him to do so on behalf of Tony Jackson and on behalf of Bob Hall. The council's attorney can do the same for you. In fact, Mr. Weber, a city attorney, has already filed a motion to dismiss this lawsuit on behalf of the city and we're awaiting adjudication of that. It's important to note, I think, guys, that our financial situation, our current budget simply does not allow us to continue any kind of potential political bickering or partisan fighting. It just doesn't allow that, and it sounds like we're in agreement that Bob Hall shouldn't even be on this lawsuit. The attorney, the city attorney, has already been contracted to represent these kinds of matters. In fact, at a lower rate than the council's attorney. I have put some numbers together for you so that you can see. And I'll ask the moderator of this meeting to throw those numbers up. I've prepared this for you so that you can see the impact of what we're working on here. In January of, to current date, to show you how our councils are working. In January, from January 2020 until March, the Weber Law Office, which is the city attorney, has billed $6,662.70. This includes his work with the Board of Public Works, anything to do with council legislation that has been sponsored, and any of the miscellaneous court cases that he's been managing. During that same period, the Gillon Water Law Office, which only represents the city council, has billed $5,856.50. I am concerned about our budget based on the previous history of the council's attorney. When he served as city attorney, you can see the numbers below for the past four years. From January 2016 to December of 2019, Gillon Water Law Office billed $705,759.11. For comparison, the town of Sellersburg, which operates, although a town somewhat similar with attorney's needs, has billed only $220,186.00. Most importantly, I would draw the council's attention to our budget for 2020, which allocates only $50,000 for attorney's fees. It is my concern that if the council, you can take the numbers down. It's my concern that if the council approves this resolution and allows Michael Gillon Water's law office to represent Bob Hall in this matter, you're hiring a more expensive attorney when one that is capable of doing it has already been authorized to, to take him off of the case. If you wish to modify a resolution and just ask for a waiver of conflict of interest so that Gillon Water Law Office can represent Bob Hall and allow Bob Hall to pay those legal fees, that's perfectly fine. But I also think it's worth noting that the council doesn't truly have the authority to, to pass this resolution. And that's the greater concern here. Ultimately, the council does have, under Indiana Code 364624, the authority to hire your own attorney, which you have done. But you do not have the authority to hire counsel on behalf of anybody else, whether they formally worked for the city or they do now. Only the head of the Department of Law has that authorization. And by nature of the executive's appointment, the head of our Department of Law is attorney Mickey Weber. So I think you need to take these things into consideration before we vote on this. I've already authorized the city attorney to take action and remove Bob Hall from this case because he believes that he is immune. And I trust the city attorney. I've already authorized that to be done. There's simply no reason to pay a higher earning attorney to do that.
It's my understanding that this is to waive potential conflict. Is that correct?
And to authorize the, oh, I mean, it's, it's to waive a potential conflict of interest and authorize the city council attorney to represent Mayor Hall. If I could, I'd like to explain what this is about.
Go ahead.
This lawsuit.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gillon Water, I don't think, this is a sponsorship of this, and I've explained.
This is a discussion and my client has given me permission to speak. If we need to have a motion so I can do that, you will. You've had, you just got like to have my say. Now.
I would like for you.
Members of the council, this is a lawsuit that was filed by a couple of people who claimed that their utilities were turned off because of directions by the city. The mayor, former mayor, Mr. Jackson was named, the city council was named, the city was named, the utility companies were named, people that didn't own the property were named personally. It is just a, basically a shotgun approach to a lawsuit. I agree with Mr. Weber that this is a frivolous lawsuit and that the council's immunity and Tony's and Mayor, former Mayor Hall's immunity should be sufficient to get this matter dismissed. Now, as much as the mayor may want Mickey Weber to represent Bob Hall, there's an ethical concern here unless Bob Hall pleads a potential conflict of interest. Mr. Weber can't do that if he would not. And even if the mayor is willing to have him do something that's against the rules of ethics, I don't think Mr. Weber would want to do that. I've known him for many years and I don't think he wouldn't do that.
I appreciate that, and since we're talking about.
I'd like to, and I'll let you say. Now, the incremental difference between me representing the city council and getting that dismissed and me representing the city council and then Mayor, former Mayor Hall and getting this minimal. Mr. Weber and I had a discussion about this and I thought we were working together on this because I spoke with former Mayor Hall and he's a little uncomfortable with Mr. Weber representing him because they have no relationship and he's been hired by the political, the former mayor. And so it's understandable that he would want somebody that he has a relationship with and trusts. Now, if the council doesn't want to waive the conflict of interest and let him hire a different attorney, he can certainly do that. But I can tell you, and I passed out a memo to the members of the council that are here, the city has a responsibility to provide him with a defense. And you can do that or you can not do that, but he's entitled to, if he's against it. He does have the defense, but somebody has to follow the legal work in order that the defense be considered by the judge. Now, I can do that or somebody else can do that and the city pays someone else. And it's going to cost more to do that than to have me do that, just like it won't cost much more if Mr. Weber does it for more than one person. It won't cost much more if I do it for more than one person. Now, Mr. Weber has looked at the statute that says that that the officers, departments, boards, commissions, and other agencies of the city may not have attorneys without, without the authorization of the head of the Department of Law, and that is the city attorney. That is correct. But the, there are statutes and they're included in this memo I provided you that authorize the legislative body to hire, contract with attorneys and legal research assistants under the terms it considers appropriate. And the clerk treasurer can do that too, even though the city attorney has not approved it. There are statutes that require the city, the governing body of the city to compromise, settle, defend, claim, or sue fraud against the political subdivision or its employees. The council is the governing body of the city, not the mayor, not the city attorney, but the council is the governing body. And I believe, oh, there's a case that, that helps clarify what may appear to some people to be a, a conflict of these laws. One law says that the city attorney has to, the Department of Law has to approve attorneys and the other statutes say that you can hire your own attorney. So which one applies? Well, the courts have interpreted this as saying where there is a specific statute that authorizes a political body to do something, then it overrides a general statute. We're not asking you to, you know, hire somebody to represent the Board of Public Works and Safety or the Plan Commission or the Redevelopment Commission, although I think they've got the authority to do that themselves. This is to fulfill your statutory duty to defend former employees. Like I said, I don't care if I represent Mayor, former Mayor Hall or not, but you're obligated to provide him with a defense. And if you would prefer that he hires some other attorney or law firm, then he can do that and it will end up costing the city more.
Miss Gillon Water, thank you.
I would just. And I've had my say now, Mr. Weber, and the mayor can, can contradict me if they would like.
I'm going to stop because, and I'm actually only going to ask city attorney Mickey Weber for any very specific thing in clarifying the state statute here because what we're looking, the reason I don't think it's appropriate for the attorneys to be involved in this particular discussion is that they have a huge conflict of interest because they're, each of them would be in a place where they're advocating that they get paid more money. So that, that's a problem, you understand? Like, that's why I'm not allowing Mr. Gillon Water to just continue to go because he's basically trying to argue on his own behalf that he should get the money to represent Bob Hall. And this is not about politics. This is not about that. I'm not denying that Bob Hall should be removed and I'm not denying that he is entitled to representation in this regard from the sense of being removed from this case. What I've said is that he's not entitled to pick his attorney if he's going to use that statute that says that the city has to represent him because the city attorney has already been appointed and authorized to remove him from that case. So Mickey, if you have something very specific to clarify about any of the state statutes, I welcome you to talk, but I do know that you're coming in very, where you or Mr. Gillon Water are arguing over who should get the city's money.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and in light of that, I, without, there's no way to address the disagreements I have with Mr. Gillon Water's specific statutory interpretation. I'll, I'll leave it to say that I think you accurately summarized the law. I think that Mr. Gillon Water and I agree that the former mayor is immune from this lawsuit, should not have been named. The pleading does not identify any of the things that would allow him to be individually liable for, even if the alleged activities did happen, and I'm not saying they did. I think that, as it specifically pertains to the code, the council did not ever employ, the mayor doesn't employ the mayor, the former mayor is not a former employee of the council. The council does not have the authority to take his representation outside of the statute that specifically requires any legal advice or representation to be approved or authorized by the Department of Law. And that's true regardless of who might serve at the mayor's pleasure as the head of the Department of Law. And that's all I've got to say about it.
Mr. Weber, if you represent Mayor, former Mayor Hall without his approval?
I would not file an appearance on behalf of the former mayor without his approval. I think that on behalf of the city, to the extent that it furthers the city's interest to have him removed from that legis, or from that litigation, I can file that motion on behalf of the city, but I would not appear on behalf of someone who had not directed me to do so or didn't wish me to do so.
Which I've already authorized city attorney Mickey Weber to do, to file on behalf of the city a motion to remove Bob Hall and Tony Jackson from this lawsuit.
But what if that is not accepted? What if the court says, no, they're going to be in the lawsuit? Then does Bob Hall, if he decides he doesn't want Mickey Weber to be his representation, do we, we have the right to give him different representation?
I think the city has, the city council has the right to pick an attorney for Mayor Hall. I don't think that Mayor Hall has the right to pick any attorney that he wants.
Okay.
But the city council can provide the defense and is obligated.
Mr. Gillon Water.
I give you the statutes, we are obligated to provide him with the defense.
Mr. Gillon Water, you're not recognized by the chair to speak right now. I've already.
I understand that, but I'm talking.
I'm sorry, I asked the question.
You ask me a question, I'm responding to the question.
Okay, so Mickey, what's your answer in this?
My answer is similar to Mr. Gillon Water's in that Bob does not have the right, Mr. Hall, former Mayor Hall, does not have the right to choose an attorney and pass that bill onto the city. Where we disagree is about who has the authority to choose what representation they will authorize. In, in that regard, it's a separation of powers issue. The council only has the authority to hire legal counsel to represent it. All other legal matters other than as specifically identified, like the city clerk treasurer, for instance, has to come through the Department of Law, under the executive branch. As far as that, well, no, that's it.
Do you agree that you represent him?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
You agree that you, that you cannot have him represent him as a senior?
I have spoken with Mr. Hall, but presuming that it is correct that he does not wish to represent me or wish me to represent him, it is correct that I can't and won't. But I think that goes back to what the mayor said. The city had, may have an ethical, although I don't believe they have a legal obligation to provide representation for Mr. Hall, but they don't have any kind of obligation to provide him with the counsel that he chooses. They can accept the representation the city is willing to offer or he can hire counsel as he sees fit. Those are his rights.
I will ask the attorneys to, again, stay out of this from this point forward because, again, it feels as if you are advocating for which one of you gets to assume because one way or another, there will be a small fee paid here, even if it's just a quick 30-minute motion to remove Bob Hall from the case. And I just don't think it's appropriate for you two to be advocating for your own money. So I hope you understand. What it comes down to by state statute is that, yes, Bob Hall, in this particular matter, is entitled to have someone represent him on this matter. But he does not get to pick the city attorney, the current mayor does. And I have done that. And so if he, if Mayor, if former Mayor Bob Hall wants to have the city represent him, then he will have to go through the attorney that has been chosen to do that. And the council, under state statute, does not have the legal right to pick that attorney. The mayor does. So he would be then, he has a choice to make. He would either be conceding to let the city and the chosen city attorney represent him in this matter or he would be choosing another attorney that he would have to pay for on his own.
My advice is to thank the resolution. I disagree with the mayor's interpretation.
Is there any additional discussion on this matter from the council members? I will call for the vote using the roll call method. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Bertram?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yeah.
Gill?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yeah.
The motion has, the Resolution 2020 R 5 has been approved unanimously. I will make it known at this moment that I will immediately veto this resolution for the same reasons that I said before. Financially, it's in the best interest of the city to use an attorney that has been contracted at a lower rate. I've shown you the numbers of why this matters. Secondly, it is the interpretation of the state, of the city attorney, as well as my own for reading the actual Indiana code, that the council does not have the authority to hire an attorney for another person or group or agency. So for that reason, I am going to immediately announce that I will veto this resolution. Moving on in the agenda, we have some old business to look at. The second and final reading of Ordinance 2020 OR 7. This was the annexation ordinance for the property over which Parkside Trace Apartments are going to be built or if it's sold. And so this is the second and final reading of that annexation. We did not receive any remonstrances. We had talked last time about opening that up for email. We received no other additional remonstrances or, or comments about this annexation other than the public comment that was made tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 2020 OR 7 on the annexation, but second and final reading.
I'll make the motion, Brian Hester.
Motion made by Brian Hester, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Is there any discussion on this ordinance, the second reading? I see no hands, I hear no.
Mr. Benson? Is he representing that?
Mr. Benson, did you have something you wanted to say about this annexation?
I can address the council if, if the council has any questions. I didn't plan on it. I'm just being here addressing, or I might as well address it for the record. I think Brad Benson with the Applegate Fire from Boyham, and that's at 428 Meggs Avenue in Jeffersonville, Indiana, here on behalf of Sandia Development Parts LLC. I've spoken with Mr. Gillon Water about this. I don't want to put any words in his mouth. I don't want to put any words in his mouth, so if he if I go speak out of turn or out of our conversation, please object. You know, I don't think there's any real reason for a delay or quite honestly, a justification for one legally, with it being a hundred percent voluntary petition. And then on top of that, even this, if it is proved as far as the annexation as well as the development, you know, that from a taxing point, it would create, you know, quite a bit of tax dollars for the city. And then to make something known that I'm not sure we were originally unaware of, that the current, the city is currently taxing this property as if it is in the city, which is not an issue for our client right now. Just something that we became aware of throughout this process that I think the council should be made aware of as well. So if there's any questions, feel free to let me know and I'll address anything I can.
Any additional discussion on this 2020 O R seven for its second and final reading? I'll call for the vote in the roll call method. Bertram? Jackson?
Yes.
Gill?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
And Cox?
Yeah.
So, our ordinance 2020 O R seven is approved on its second and final reading unanimously. That brings an.
Thank you all.
Again, an end to our business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by B J Steele. Oh, I guess we'll have to, just say, oh, you say yes if you, if you agree.
Yes.
Right, we agree. Is there anybody who opposed? Hearing none, unanimous adjournment. Have a good night, everyone, and we'll see you next time.